So why don't we, if we could please stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Dr. Swab.
Here.
Mrs. Brewer.
Here.
Mr. Biesecker.
Here.
Mr. Manuel.
Here.
Mrs. Hill.
Aronway. Held up by the storm. First item is approving the agenda in the minutes. Do you have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We're going to have that now and then.
Yeah.
We have been now for number three and 100 financial reports for Mercer Health.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. Any other additions?
I move to approve the additions and the agenda.
Can I second?
I'll second.
Thanks Scott. Roll call for approval.
Mrs. Brewer, yes. Mr. Biesecker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hill.
Second. Any discussions or questions? Nothing? And addition, can I have a revision? Or can I have a roll call please for approval?
Mrs. Brewer, yes. Mr. Biesecker.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Dr. Swab.
Yes. Next is our student spotlight. We'd like to turn the meeting over to our staff.
So we have our student spotlight, last student spotlight for coming through. So we'll get started with elementary. And this month was kindergarten, kindergarten teachers who got some nominations. Our first. Escorted by her mother. And this is what Mrs. Clark had to say. My nomination for this month's student spotlight is Emelina Poulter. Emelina has received this award because she has made huge progress during the first half of the school year. She has strengthened her independent academic and coping skills a great deal. Emelina is a great role model for her classmates. She completes her work in attendance and follows directions and works hard. She continuously actively participates in large and small group discussions. She is also always willing to lend a helping hand. She is quick to learn from her mistakes in a positive way and similarly supports her peers in this manner. She's a pleasure to have in the class. Great job, Emelina. Congratulations. Our next person is just now showing up. And that is Athlee Murphy. By Athlee Murphy. So Athlee has been nominated by Mrs. Britow. This is what Mrs. Britow had to say about Athlee. I'd like to recognize Athlee Murphy from my kindergarten classroom as this month's student spotlight. He is the son of Brock Murphy in China next. Athlee has an older sister, Aya, and a younger brother, Arius. Athlee enjoys math, playing with his friends in the classroom and watching videos on YouTube. Athlee came to my classroom and struggled to get his work completed. He has been showing amazing improvement. He came to kindergarten knowing most of his capital letters and some of those lowercase letters. He wanted to write everything using capital letters, but now is consistently using lowercase letters. He is learning sounds into words when we are reading and writing. He is one of the first kids to send out words when we are reading our decodable books. Athlee is a math whiz. He is able to figure out more complex math problems easily. He loves when Miss Athlee gives him complex math equations during any spare time he may have. He can already count past 100 already. Athlee may be working on minor behavior hurdles, but he is beginning to overcome some of these things. He strives to do his best. He loves to be challenged and enjoys having him in classrooms. These are the many reasons why I would like to recognize this as a Canadian Bradford kindergarten student, Athlee Murphy. Great job, Athlee. Congratulations. No, that's your question. I gave you that.
Any question I got?
Mrs. Frye, would you like to read?
Athlee, I'm a family friend. This is, this is yours. Okay. The student I'm choosing to recognize is Burnley Snyder for this month's student spotlight. She is six years old and loves school. Her favorite color is purple and her favorite thing to play with are babies. She loves to jump in the trampoline with her brothers. Burnley's best friend was Kaylee in our class. Burnley is always so lovely and greets me with a smile on her face. I don't think she has a bad day. She is a hard worker and displays all the qualities of a pack leader. She can read all their records, identify all the letters and sounds we have learned so far and is working on early reading. She also does very well in math. I am extra proud of the effort she puts in each and every day. She has made so much progress in the last year and I am excited to see her grow this year. Burnley is a model student. She listens and participates during the school day. Not only that, but she plays well with her peers at recess and helps them if they need any help. She's taken in another student in our class who usually needs some help. And she helps with her work or everyday activities. When we walk down the hallway, I can always count on her being Bradford's best. I truly enjoy having her in my classroom. Great job, Burnley, and congratulations.
So we're going to move to the junior high school. And the first person. We have Jocelyn Wood, nominated by Mr. Cooper. And Jocelyn was nominated by Mr. Cooper. My nomination for this month's student spotlight is Jocelyn Wood. Throughout the two years I have had Jocelyn, he has been a great leader in the classroom. He is always prepared daily and ready to tackle whatever challenges that day may bring him. He is responsible and treats other students with respect and is someone that takes great pride in his work. His hard work coincides with his academic success as well. Great job, Jocelyn. And last, but not least, we have Callie. Who did you nominate? I chose, she was nominated by Mrs. Walters. This is what Mrs. Walters had to say. I chose Callie as this month's student spotlight. She is motivated, always finishes her work, she takes her running into her own hands, making sure, making sure to do the best she possibly can. She will take charge of our group project to be sure it is successful and will always want to help again along with her classroom. She is taking Edison classes and involved in sports in the club. Thank you. Great job, Callie.
So that concludes our student spotlight. We'd like to, the board would like to thank everybody for coming. We appreciate the parents, the students, and the families coming. It's one of the highlights of our meeting to be able to recognize our students and have our staff bring our best students to the meeting. So we'll pause the meeting and give everybody an opportunity to leave. And we'll continue to work on the superintendent about the weather. Everybody have a great evening. If you'd like, you can take off before we begin the rest of the meeting. Welcome to stay if you'd like.
Yeah, the ones that have four generations. Great grandma, grandma.
Is this Michelle's or is this?
That's Chris.
That's Michelle.
There's snowing on the cameras. All right, sorry about that. Real quick, on the junior high high school side, since the last time we met, we did do seniors helping seniors for Thanksgiving, which is a great thing that Cheryl Clark and the cafeteria staff kind of puts together. I forgot to throw in there Amy Gage who kind of lines up and takes all the phone calls. But I think, Mr. Hurst, what was the number of?
Hundred and one?
Yeah, a hundred.
Hundred ten?
Yeah, it was over a hundred meals that we delivered to, to the community, which was a great time. This was actually the first time that I was able to get out of the building and actually drive the kids around and kind of deliver those. And it's kind of cool to see them interact with, with the community members and just how fortunate, how happy they are to see them and get those meals. So it's a really cool thing. But our seniors that helped this year were Owen Cannon, Trail Manuel, Sage Furman, Elizabeth Skinner, Emily Miller, Avery Homan, and Caitlin Richards. I had the three boys on top and they were kind of a hoot to drive around with. They, they had me laughing about the entire time. Mainly about my driving ability. We had the spelling bee this week for the junior high. And our first place winner is Jack York. Jack's in the middle here. Second place is Tanner Pilkens. He's on the end on the, on the right hand side over there. And then Nick Shank is our third place. So Jack York and Tanner will go on to the Dark County Spelling Bee, which is typically in January, mid-January. They have a meal and it's over at Romers and it's a really nice thing. You know, last year we actually had the winner. So, and Jack and Tanner did very well. There was quite a few rounds. So I expect us to at least be in the hunt again this year. Cool thing about Tanner is he's only in the sixth grade and he was our second place participant. So I'm really, really proud of him for that. So. And then this week, we have Secret Santa going on. Our student leadership group helps out with the kids either selecting different items, wrapping gifts for them, but they really enjoy just kind of, you know, communicating and getting to know some of those elementary kids, a lot of them they know anyway. But it's neat to see the older kids interact with the elementary students. I like going in there and just kind of watching what they do. And you can just tell those elementary kids really look up to them and, which is a really neat thing. Which is another good reason, you know, K-12 building, we have the ability to do that fairly easily.
And we want, the PT does a great job getting them to get.
Yes, they do. Also, I want, I can't forget, and I apologize, Mr. Hurst, already. When we did the seniors helping seniors for Thanksgiving, Mr. Hurst and Sandy dished out all the meals. So they, they actually go down in their aprons and were tireless.
It was always fun.
It is fun.
We had an elementary fundraiser this year and they, the students, it's so good. We sold cookie dough and I don't know what they're called, but they rise and they like cream cheese in them. I forgot what they're exactly called, but we had this fundraiser and anyone that sold fifty items got to go on a, go into the party bus and go to Hero Day over in Pickwood. So if you've never been or heard of, Pickwood Mall has changed quite a bit. And they have Hero Day. I think they have some axe throwing in the mall now, but the kids got to go to McDonald's, ride in this, one of the shindig party buses over there. Then they got to play and all the, the things that are over there. So they had a really good time. In fact, I should have put one of the slides in there, but Emelina got to go and on the way back, she was sound asleep laying across one of the benches. So it was kind of cute. Kindergarten did a Thanksgiving feast again. The parents, the teachers, they had so much food. Mrs. Frye's dad made a turkey and we had one of the dads, one of the dads actually that was here that helped carve the turkey. And it was just, it just a great time. So you could see some of our pilgrims and some of our Native Americans also in the picture. And then first grade has their annual balloon parade. And so they had over twenty-four balloons in the parade. And as you can see, they, they march around the school. They show off their balloons. It's like Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. And then the elementary had their spelling bee as well. Our winners were two fifth graders, Hunter Schrader and Brett Brady. Salad was our runner-up. They did a really good job. They went through about five rounds of the, the spelling bee. And it was just a very big success. And I'm not gonna repeat what Mr. Mr. Barrie said, in January, they will be going over to Romers. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Before we do the athletic achievements. This is Josh Seeling. He is, well, hopefully it all goes well tonight in the board meeting. He is gonna be Chloe's substitute while she is on maternity. He's been with us now for a couple of weeks. And, and really, he's doing a fantastic job. And actually, when we started talking about this, he kind of threw out right away that there were some things that we could throw out there for athletics and volunteered to come in and do this. And, you know, we're, we're happy that he's stepping up to do this. He's also our girls' basketball coach. So we're, we're happy to have Josh, Josh coming in. And like I said, he's doing a fantastic job thus far.
Thank you. Some athletic achievements I want to highlight. Owen Cannon got second team All Ohio Defensive Back for 2024. And then the upcoming schedule, girls were already six games in and boys are two games in. But some highlights for the upcoming schedule is December twelfth tomorrow. The girls, we play National Trail Home at six. Thirteenth, the boys travel the trail at six. The fourteenth, junior highs boys basketball plays at Dayton Christian at ten. Also that day, the fourteenth high school boys play four recovery at six, and that is the Hall of Fame game. The sixteenth junior high boys play in Sonia at five thirty. The seventeenth, the high school boys play in Sonia at six. The nineteenth, we travel, the girls do, at in Sonia at six. December twentieth, high school boys at Tri-County North. The twenty-first is here for us, the girls, at, are against North at twelve. And then the twenty-seventh through the twenty-eighth is our holiday tournament at Covington. We had a great turnout Saturday against Newton. And I know, you know, both teams, the junior high boys, they all appreciate the attendance and playing in front of crowds. So that's all I really got.
Do you have your nominees for the, or the winners for the Hall of Fame? I haven't seen anything on the.
Yeah, it's Chris Doughty is the Hall of Fame inductee.
There's just one this year?
Yeah.
I was like, I never heard anything about that this year. Usually I hear who or what.
And you've got nominations. Can you use something from the person?
I, the only one thing I do have, they did have their National Career Tech Honor Society induction. I didn't bring the list with me because it was in the back of my car and it was snowing so hard I just ran and it was like, but I, I know the ladies. I remember looking at the list, but I can't think who all was on it. Just them, just the two twins, Daphne and. Yes, so yeah, they're the ones I saw that on the list. So that we just had and it's a huge accomplishment. So. And then, like I said, our meeting is tomorrow. So I'll get all the numbers from the sophomore days and all of our visitors and how many we have enrolled. Those are always exciting numbers. But my meeting's not until tomorrow.
I think about thirty-two.
Enroll?
Thirty-two students apply.
Oh, okay.
Of our sophomores on that date.
And most of them were within the first fifteen.
All of them were in, within like the first ten minutes. And then we had one straggler an hour or so later.
So they pretty much go by first come, first served. So they know they have to be fast. Some of the programs don't do it that way depending on their numbers, but mainly it's first come, first served there. So that is crazy.
And Wendy does a good job of even telling parents in emails, make sure you get all at six o'clock, six noon. So.
So I'm sure all of our programs are probably very, or to the limit of I know tomorrow, but usually they're just filling up so fast. It's a good thing to be growing district and their construction projects going along great. So hopefully it'll be long and their new programs will be up and running. That's all I have until next month when I know more about the elements.
Yes, I have good things here to share out. First of all, our Head Start restroom project is actually moving forward again. We've got a mason that was supposed to be here yesterday to start laying bricks and work on the exterior of the building for a while. The previous job was backed up a little bit because of weather. He has asked to come in now on Friday and get everything set up. So we expect him to start on Monday next week. So we've got arrangements to move the Head Start kits to a different classroom. Thank you to Shane Snyder and his health class for moving to another room to open up that classroom. So it will be, I'm sure, a busy time for our maintenance staff and Head Start maintenance staff to get those classrooms situated and set up. But I, I'm excited that we're moving in this and we'll have a very good product at the end. The hallway painting and the floors is moving. If you haven't been out in the main hallway, the, the doors have started to get painted. There, there are some things I want them to go back and fix and they promised that they will go back and fix those. So those will be happening here soon, but just painting those tan doors that have been beat up over the last, over twenty years, black makes a world of difference in the looks of that, that hallway. So it looks absolutely, it, it's moving in the right direction. We talked to the contractor today and he brought in six samples for flooring. When you guys leave today, check them out. They're in the main hallway over here on the north wall, close to the gym. In fact, if you dead end from this hallway out, they're just to your right. So go check them out. There's two of them there that we decided were too light for what we're looking for here in the hallway. And they, we kind of vetoed those. So there's four of them left out there. If you want to look at those and give some input, we'd love to hear what you have to think. I'm going to skip one and come back to it here just in a second, but the, the last part here, cold day bus pickups. We have had a plan in place here for the last couple of years where if it gets super cold out, we have a bus that will go into town and pick kids up instead of having them walk out. Now, over the last two times that we've had cold days, we've asked the crossing guards how many kids have been walking to school. The first day, and I, we've only had really two cold days this year so far. The first day, we had four kids walking to school. The second day, we had three kids walking to school. So not a big population. Last year, we had the bus go down to the post office and pick up kids. There were two kids and those two kids stayed in mom's car until the bus got there and then got on the bus and then rode out here. So I, I'm still not sure the logistics of that, on how that was a benefit to anybody, but we tried it. It worked. It, it benefited a few kids. This year, we already have something in place. Instead of the post office, we're moving to the library. And thanks to Bob and his staff over there at the, the library, he's going to go down and open up the library. So there's one place for kids to go in and stay and wait for the bus to get there. And that way, when the bus comes up, they can just pick them up and go instead of having the bus there for five, ten minutes, waiting for the kids to get on and, and not have a cold place to have to wait. So we have been talking about that. We watch wind chills. In private, I can talk to you guys about what those levels are. We do have some community members that have voiced, we have a community member that has voiced an opinion about the differences between my threshold and what that person's is. And it's definitely different. But we have already talked about when to use that. Tomorrow, we're watching the weather to see how cold it's going to get. Of course, tomorrow is going to be a cold day. So we'll see if we can get there. And then the last part on my report is, well, actually, two things. Thank you to the FFA organization. We have some ornaments here. Those are fundraising gifts that, or fundraisers that they produce each year. They design them. They sold them at the craft show. They sold them as a fundraiser this year. And we bought five of them for you guys to, to have as a memento for the Christmas present this year. I thought they looked very, very nice. So I'm very proud of what our FA is doing with those. And then the last thing is our school calendar. And we had, and Wendy's here and I'm sure she's gonna have maybe some things here that she can answer if, if anything comes up. There is a list of eleven points that the calendar committee has put together that would be things that they'd like to convey to say, if we were to start school earlier than the Dark County fairs end, these are things that they would argue that would benefit our kids. So take a chance, look through that. I would like to spend just a couple of minutes and talk about this before we move on, if that's okay. And make sure we're still on the same page before we make any final decisions with, with the calendar. We did meet today for the first time as a group. We plan to meet weekly until the thing is done. The goal is, at the February meeting, we have the official adoption of the calendar. But there's a new law out there that says, I say new law, it's three, maybe four years old now, that says we have to have the calendar put in public eye for thirty days before we're allowed to officially accept it. So the goal, if we get to the point of saying January, we have it available to present, and then February, we vote on it. Or we've done in the past, if we can't get to those tight timelines, we can vote on it in February contingent on public participation. So that's our goals with that. But please take a look at those eleven pieces. And this is a great time if, if we've got questions, Wendy's a great resource as a member of that committee to, to discuss some of these things or answer any questions we may have.
As an educator, former educator, I've, I've, I've seen over the years arguments and pros and cons. I've always been a pro of having school as soon as possible. Instruction time for testing. We, there was one year, I'm pretty sure I said this before. There was one year where we started school before, before Dark County or during, right, right, same time as Dark County started. And there was a handful of kids that was involved with the fair. Those kids were told that they go to the fair, it would be a few thousand. Said all they had to do is come pick up the textbooks and any assignments that they had to get done. And then the rest of the students were here for school. I, I've always, I, I understand the importance of the Dark County Fair. I've always, I've always said that. It's vital for our kids that are involved. But if we're gonna be held accountable from the state testing, then I say the more instruction day we can have before the testing, better off we are. So. That's my two cents.
How many days is it?
Well, it depends on what, if we can go before the Dark County Fair, we can go up to seven days before. We could go up to five days before. Right now, the committee's being told they can't go any day before that. We've started, Miami County usually starts the week before on a Wednesday, like the twenty-first, around that.
And the Dark County schools start when?
Usually that Monday, that after the Dark County Fair.
So there's a week difference between the Miami side and the Dark County side.
They run up together. So Miami County will end on Thursday, Dark County.
Not the fair, I mean the start of school. They'll start a week ahead of what we.
Yeah, they start probably two weeks, two to almost three weeks after Upper Valley. Cause they start on the fifteenth.
Yeah, they start early so they have all their graduation stuff back to homeschool. So they like to be done early before homeschools are done.
Cause they, they start the last, they start the last day at the Miami County Fair, cause my son was affected by that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, they definitely start early so they can have everything back to the homeschools and all that stuff done before their kids graduate. So that's the same with our school. We start so early because we want everything done a couple of weeks early.
Yeah.
The other advantage of starting earlier is that you get the first semester in before Christmas break or right at Christmas break. So that when you come, when the students come back in in January, we're starting with a fresh new semester. Instead of having to come in and have one or two days' instruction and start to do special testing, just like that. That's, to me, that's counterproductive. If we're going, again, again, if the state's going to hold us accountable by our testing, that's a whole new ballgame.
That's the thing we ran into this year. That's the thing we ran into this year. Because last year, we were two weeks into January when we ended the semester.
Yes.
And I was the last person to submit transcripts into the, to the career center for those kids. And I don't want to be the last person ever again because we had, we had, this last two years, this is the first time I've ever had kids denied to be able to go to the career center because they're getting so full. So I want to be at the top of that list. I want our kids to be at the top of the list every time. So we have 37 quarter, two days, because we're ending at the semester this year at the, at Christmas break on the 20th.
But I don't think you getting those transcripts stops their enrollment. Their enrollment's based on when they enroll.
And then you mean by when they enroll? Because all my kids got done at 6:20, last year, all my kids got done at 6:22. I mean, they were right there because I coached them into getting done before 6:15. So they're all there, some of them were still denied. And my fear is that I.
I can guarantee it's not because you got that in late because it's the end of your semester.
Right, but I don't want to be the last.
Right.
I don't want to be the last.
But we're the only Dark County school, so that's why.
But we're actually a Miami County school.
Right, but our kids go to the Dark County Fair. That's why, like, Dark County schools start usually after the fair. So they know we're Dark County school. They're not going to keep kids out of the career center because our semester ends later.
I don't want to be the last ones to send transcripts, I just don't. Not when I'm usually the first.
But as a teacher, it's coming back after Christmas break and starting your fresh new semester. It's so much better than having to deal with two days' instruction and three days' testing. Again, that's counterproductive.
So we will advertise this to the public and let them know we're going to have a meeting in January to discuss it further? Is that what you're planning on doing? Like, you know, we had big groups in here supporting us starting after the fair. We're going to let them know that we're in discussion.
Trey or Holly, you guys have thoughts?
Whatever's best for the kids would be my default. I don't have a dog in the fight anymore, so.
Yeah, I would agree, I think.
Whatever's best for the kids.
Don't get me wrong, the Dark County Fair is vital. It's a very important part of the educational process.
I think most of that education is done prior to the fair.
True.
I mean, the fair, the fair itself, most of any education involved with animals or anything else has been long before the fair. So I don't know that that's justifiable. But like I say, I don't care. It is nice not to have to worry with the kids taking out of school to go to the fair. But if it's better for the kids to, you know, get the more, and it makes sense to end the semester at Christmas break. That's the way it always was when I was growing up. Don't know if it helped me much, but that's the way it was. And, you know, I see a lot about validity in that. So I, I don't have a dog in the fight. Whatever works best for the people, you know, our instructors, our administration, I'm good with it.
I would agree. I think some of the reasons for starting early are very good reasons that are on the list. I like some of the ideas on here about some fall break, you know, pumpkin show. Pumpkin show is, affects more Bradford students than the Dark County Fair. There are very few students participating in the fair, but the fair is big for Dark County. So, you know, I don't think we can forget that. But again, if it benefits the students to have more instruction prior to testing. And it does make sense that the semester ends prior to Christmas break. I understand that reasoning. But I think a lot of the thought that has been put into this are good things that maybe I wouldn't have thought of without reading it.
Ryan, did you have any other comments?
No. That's what I said.
Yeah, I think, you know, from my perspective, I think the Christmas break is important to be able to end. I mean, I've taken, I've been in, being educated my entire life in my profession and going through many years of college, nothing's worse than to have that trickle over. So I think that's an important thing. The way to navigate that, I think, is the art. I think the other thing that we have to consider is early, in my, as a student, early time that is inefficient and I'm not engaged is not as important as later time where I'm more engaged. So you have to ask yourself, starting earlier with less engagement from the parents or the students, I mightn't learn as much as I did if I'm studying for a test and preparing. What I learned in the beginning is helpful, but it's really that push, those facts that aren't intuitively remembered is what you have to learn on a test. And so I'm not going to remember those in August, given to me in August if I have to test later. I'll learn maybe processes, but I won't really know those details. So I think time is important, but time closer to testing for those little facts that you don't really need to know, but you need to know to pass the test are probably the most beneficial. And I think in my years of studying, efficient studying is probably the best. So if we have poor engagement early, that's probably not good time. We're just buying time but not buying engagement. So I would encourage the staff to look at good engagement time and look at the big picture. I think switching the trimesters is important, dragging it over the holidays. I mean, nothing was greater than ending the semester. I went in college when we had quarters. You got, you were off from Thanksgiving to the first of January. It's the only time in my career you ever caught up because otherwise you've always had something going on. So, and I think that's important to give those kids that real separation. So I think that's an important thing. But looking, I think, looking at effective study days. Not as much the date as it is effectiveness, being there, being present, being engaged. And my only fear of, of starting early with the fair distraction is that, yeah, we're work going. I remember starting school, but you really didn't want to start. And it was really a disengagement in the beginning because you got the fair, you got Friday, you're going to go do the football team, starting the first game, the band with. How engaged are our kids? So I'm great for as much educational days. I just want good, engaged, present educational days. That'd be my thoughts.
Well, one thing is too, when we ended at semester, I mean, I think that's a great idea. I love it. That's how my schedule is. I love that. But when we had snow days, it made it so bad to come back in January and then have to take your exams. You know, that really puts a punch on things when it's bad weather by, right by that time. If it's after the first of the year, you got those weeks to prepare for it. But if it's right at semester, that kind of makes it rough too as well. Like the last two or three days before the break, then we have snow. So then it really puts a damper on things.
And we have done that in the past.
Yeah, we've had the snow days right at Christmas break, and then we have to come back and have to worry about exams.
And schedules.
Because they thought they were, you know. So that is definitely something that.
I know the year that we did that, where we started at the same time as the Dark County Fair. And the students that were participating went to the fair, like I said. And we had a fun group.
The only thing is, the parents said that that, even though their kids are excused, it puts them so far behind.
That's not good. I don't think, if you're going to excuse kids, that's leaving a child behind.
Yeah, 17 of them.
Yeah.
No, 17 and six.
That's, I mean, I always hated them as class. Because you always never felt, always felt like you were behind. Like you missed something, even though you might not have. Some part of that's missing. So I don't think that, I wouldn't, if you're going to start before, I wouldn't excuse them. You come to school because it would, you know, that first couple of days in anything, you know, that first orientation, that first get your syllabus, get things started, sets the pace for the, for the course. And I think if we started earlier, I would, I would not be in favor of saying you're okay to skip. Because then that's telling everybody that it really wasn't that important anyways. If it's okay for half or a portion to not be there, then why is it important for the others to be there? That makes it more difficult.
And I appreciate that, Vaz, a person that's had a kid at the fair. I think their education for that particular time, like selling, showing, is more, is more of a rounder education. So my kids had no problems missing for that.
Missing formal education.
Joe and I have talked about, do they have to be there all day? Do they have, you know, there's all that with it as well. But the biggest thing is, we would just like to have a discussion of, if we start earlier and take a few days off for the fair even, we have no problem with that. It's just, right now, the discussion can't happen before the Dark County Fair. There's no discussion at all of any days of how that looks and what that looks like before the fair.
Yeah, I think the previous philosophy and been making sure that the kids have that opportunity, but not restricting their educational experience, not making sure they're good educational days. But I don't know, with this, every board's different, so I get, you have to. It sounds like this group is open to be able to do some flexibility. But I think those tenants of good educational time and lack of distraction, I think are important. And I mean, I don't, I don't think if you're going to dismiss it, if you tell a student that these 10 or 15 don't have to go, that's disenfranchising, that telling them that it's really, something's not important. And I hate missing the beginning of it in any kind of organizational course or organizational class. That's so, I think, so important for you to get to where you're going. Some of those little subtlety things that you can't get on a piece of paper, you know, that you can't, you got to hear the instructor kind of, you miss something that you just always felt uneasy. The ones I've missed, I just always felt uneasy and I didn't ever feel like I had my hand around it.
Like in college, starting, starting a class a week at late. You say you can't find that class, you're already.
You never catch, you never catch up. You never completely feel like you're a part of that group. Number one, it's a community too. Not only do you lose that educational fit, you lose that community where you're like part of the group.
Well, two, I'm sure a lot of those 17 students that participate in the Dark County Fair, I'm sure a lot of them are in the FFA program. So, or in the classes that, you know, do that. So you, when you're missing that many people, you can't even have a class. So that's, that's another tough thing.
So is that rambling helpful?
Just need some direction.
Yes, kids first, but I think big picture kids, not little picture kids. You know, there's a lot to, to making sure you hit those tenants. Sounds good.
The side benefit to start or end the semester at, in the Christmas break is that the staff can get their graded stuff in. The day also, a lot of the students are starting fresh coming to be in the school year. Instead of having to come in here after the first year.
But if the last day ends on the last quarter, the grades aren't due till the January, correct?
We do, the share of grades are due the first day the teachers come back on the 6th at 11 o'clock at night. But we have, the biggest problem I think we have this year is quarter two is only 37 days. Quarter one is 44, quarter two is 37, quarter three is 50, what was that, 56, 54?
Quarter three.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we talked about that last year. We didn't like those numbers being short either. But they said the calendar committee really pushed for those numbers to be shorter in the second nine weeks than the third and fourth.
Well, you, if you bump up against that, just getting out of December, that's automatically going to make it shorter.
Right. So, yeah, it's not fair for eligibility. We talked about this last year. It's not fair for kids like eligibility and things like that. It is definitely not fair to have that shorter semester. Like, I'm not in favor in just shorting the semester just to get it done before. I'm not in favor of that.
Any other discussion?
I think that was good. A general idea that kids come first and you guys can figure out the way to navigate the.
All right, we'll do our best.
So you are not, you planning on voting on this in January for sure?
The calendar has to be done by February.
Right. The official vote will be in February.
Okay.
We'd like to have a proposal to display to the public in January. That's the vote.
But we don't need to vote on the proposal.
No.
Until February.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
That way we can, because I'm sure there'll be a lot of people asking.
Now, the only thing is, today was our first meeting. We'll meet again next Wednesday. There's one more Wednesday in January that we'll meet and we'll have to vote. So realistically, we're talking about three full meetings that we'll be able to have. I think we can probably still get it done, but we're going to be pushing to get a January proposal.
So you're wanting to bring us exactly what it is for the January meeting? Or you're not going to listen to people?
The proposal will be coming in January, yes.
But not in stone, we can talk about it and change it.
Right. And in February, we'll officially vote. And if you change it, though, you need another 30 days.
Yep.
True.
Okay. Okay.
So if you have, if you present it in January and there's a lot of discourse, it gets changed and it's going to get booted back. Yep. And what's your drop, your hard stop date for that approval then? Well, contract says it's supposed to be voted on, it's supposed to be adopted in February. Now, we can vote on it like we have in one, maybe two years where we said, we're voting on this contingent on no negative public participation concerning our calendar. Not the best way in my book to do it, but.
Right, and you don't want people to think if they, like, are hearing us now and want to talk about, you know, their kids in the fair or whatever, we don't want them to think, oh, we already have it figured out. We're not going to listen to what you have to say because we definitely want to listen to that.
Right. They'll just make it a challenge to make all the expected goals. Right. But getting, giving the students what they need is the most important. Absolutely. And that's all I have to my report. Thanks, Joe.
Sure.
Carl, pleasant news from the treasurer's office.
Just a few things I want to relay. Mr. Purse and I work on the new bus grant that we have. We've asked for an extension on it. We're trying to see, we didn't have the good fortune of getting as much money this last time. So we're, we're trying to be creative in the way we can do it and see if we, we've explained this to the EPA. And they suggested there might be some additional funding from some other floors. So we're working through that and trying to make that very purposeful as we move forward. The other thing, just to keep you apprised, I finally called the auditors this week and asked them if they had forgotten about us. And for some reason, they keep thinking we have to be audited every two years. They, they haven't gotten to the point that they understand how much federal money we've been receiving. So I sent them over, I have to do what's called a federal schedule every year that dictates what we're doing in federal funding and sent them over the preliminary. And I, and so he agreed we needed to do it. So with that, we will be going through a procurement audit from the Ohio Department of Education and federal government this year for food service. And we are still presently in the middle of an AUPD audit on our Medicaid billing. So right now, within the next month, we'll simultaneously be going through three audits. But not, not a great concern. They'll take some time, but I expect us to have positive results with those. And just bear with me if we have some slowness in the office as a result of that because I don't think since I've been here, I've had a simultaneous three audit session at one time. And since we've got a new food service director this year, she's deferring a lot of this to me because she wasn't here last year. So I just want to make you aware of what's going on. And everything else is pretty much status quo. We're still cleaning up some things and we're working through several items procedurally. We're getting to the end of the year where there's a lot of, lot of filings that have to be made. And, but everything's on track right now. I think we've been pretty successful in what we have. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Just calling, any questions? Thank you very much. Any public participation requests?
None.
So next on our agenda is the finance reports from the treasurer, which are items going through our laptop and go through to the little page file. Carla, could you give us a kind of an overview of what you would like us to approve?
Yes, one, two, and three are pretty much standard with the items. We have a list there of then and now certifications that need to be made, approval of transfers and advances for the month and the appropriation. We did receive some money for the art department, for the Harold Marker Scholarship. And we received a twenty-five dollar Amazon gift card to be used for the district and wellness grant. The resolution number ten, which happens about this time every year, is basically preparing us for the request we have to make to Miami County for the budget, for the money that we need. And that is the budget document I laid at your table. It is a replication of a five-year forecast and has some of the other funds. But it is so that we can collect our tax money, it's our cake in nature. And then the last thing is the donation that we received in the direction to pay off some lunches in the cafeteria.
Thanks. Do we have a motion to approve the items reviewed?
approved.
A second.
And a second for Maria. Any further discussions or questions for Carla? I'd like to have the roll call then for approval.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Beesecker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Swall?
Yes, we have no old business items listed. New business is the superintendent's recommendations from the consent. Items one through ten. Joe, would you give us a kind of overview of what you'd like us to approve?
Certainly will. For those of you following along, this agenda is listed on our website. First part there, we have some typical pieces. But letter B is to hire Josh Seagland as our assistant, or I'm sorry, substitute athletic director while Chloe's on leave. Number two is appoint a president pro temp, which we'll have to talk about before we make this one formal. Number three, we've got some microscopes and weight machines that we need to dispose of. Four is premier athletic trainer, actually reducing time to reflect the time that he actually works here. It's not a reduction in most time, it's just a better representation through the contract of what we owe premier. Number five, ticket prices are going to change just a little bit to follow along with low ad guidelines. And we will start charging for baseball and softball this year, which is a big change. I'll hold my personal opinions to myself on that one, but we are going along with whatever the entire conference is doing this year. Six is a membership dues for OSBA. Seven is the OSBA legal fund, which we utilize quite frequently. Number eight, substitute rate needs to go up just a little bit effective in August. So these are for our classified folks to change just to progress along with minimum wage. Number nine is the mileage rate as we do every year. Number ten is an HVAC system change or fix for a fan that's better than four foot in diameter that's off balance. We've been putting Band-Aids on it since it's been off balance and having problems. Skip's going to tear it apart over Christmas break, go get it balanced and bring it back and install it. It's going to be quite expensive, but in order to do it, it's going to take some time to be down. So he wants to do it over Christmas break while obviously people aren't in the building. But it's going to be a quite hefty bill. So that is the consent agenda.
Thanks. And then so the date and time, I think we already decided on that before. I think that's the same-
We had set for January the-
The eighth, which is the second Wednesday.
Yes, that sounds right, yes. And we originally set six o'clock for the organization meeting and six-thirty for immediately following for the regular meeting. Does that still work? Date and time, was everybody?
We can have Scott as our pro temp president. We don't have to vote on it, but we put it in here, right? We just write it and then we vote on the whole motion.
Correct.
So that'll pay with you?
Someone else wants to do that and to keep us moving forward?
Yeah.
And so that time is good too?
Yeah, I got it.
Joe, a motion to approve the items presented. Thanks, Scott, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, Holly. Any further discussion or questions? Another roll call for approval, please.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Beesecker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Swall?
Yes.
Item, Joe?
And the next one is just basically keeping the wait for the board of education members at the same as what it was last year.
Motion to approve?
Sooner.
Sorry. Any discussion?
Just don't say, no, we did that one year, that caused the treasurer a lot of problems. It was not good. I think we had, that was the year we had financial issues and everybody said, no, no, no. And that was, you can donate it back, but you got to do, we got to say yes. But that's perfectly okay, but otherwise that was a lot of heartburn. Good intentions, but we caused a lot of problems.
Any other discussion, if not roll call for approval?
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Beesecker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Swall?
Yes. So the next item is consider the first reading of all the policies. Have we kind of got the little summaries of? I don't know, Joe, did you have any?
I liked them how you shared them.
You did?
Yeah, so I didn't have seven hundred pages to go through. I mean, it was nice, I could just, oh, I just scroll through my tablet or-
If anybody's interested in that, I have those. In fact, if anybody in the public wants to see those, I have those, I could explain them. The layman's reflection of this is most, all of these are reflective of new laws that are coming out, including Senate Bill twenty-nine, which will reflect October twenty-fourth. And before the second reading, we actually adopt these, Senate Bill twenty-nine is going to be ratified and moved to something useful compared to what it is now. So there's a lot of pieces in here that reflect those new laws. Really, there's some combining of two different or multiple pieces into one. There's not anything here or shattering or-
It's just words, like changing. It wasn't anything new or, yeah.
No, it did talk about nepotism with policy forty-one twenty, which is something we already have in our policies. Criminal backcheck, record checks in forty-one twenty-one. That's the new law where everybody's going through wrapback program now. The communication devices, as of July of twenty-twenty-five, every high school is supposed to have a new revised cellphone policy to reflect what kids are doing or allowed to do in school. We've already got that in effect. There's a new law for attendance in fifty-two-hundred that's reflected. Fifty-five-hundred is artificial intelligence, which it talks about academic honesty and those type of things. But realistically, you look through these, there's nothing that's just, oh my gosh, I can't believe that's going into effect. Good or bad, either one. So I can answer questions if you got them, but I don't have much more of an explanation unless you want details on each one of them.
I think, you know, for the public, there are policies that are created across the state by that organization that we adopt to stay in legal standing with everyone. And then there's little ones that you can adjust for your specific needs. And most of them in your review don't really, we don't have any special needs that require those to be different than the rest of the state of Ohio.
Right, and we trust the lawyers that are employed by viola to guide us in the correct-
Right.
Yes, to keep us current with the current standing of the statutes.
Any other questions? That'll be our first review. Second at our next meeting. Next item is a motion to enter executive session for item G one, listed on our agenda, in a second. Roll call for executive session.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Beesecker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Swall?
Yes. And we'll have no action taken after the executive session. Unless you'd like to stay angry.
No.
I have nothing else to say.
I'm good.
Thank you.
You're going to go? Going to try to get home?